Now ten AM on June twenty-fourth, and we're gonna call into order this regular session of Wood County Commissioners' Court. It is our normal procedure to start with a word of prayer, and I believe Commissioner Gilbert has agreed to that this morning.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for everything you have done for us. Just keep an eye out for all the needy people, soldiers overseas protecting their country. Leave us some guidance in the season that we're gonna have to make this morning, and we take everybody into consideration what's going on. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number one, our agenda is public comments. Is there anyone here today who wishes to address an issue that is not otherwise on the agenda? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move, uh, please step forward. Identify yourself, come up to the stand if you would, ma'am. Identify yourself for the record, and then you may proceed.
Okay. My name is Molly Mathis, and I have never been to one of these meetings before, so I'm not sure of the protocol, but I am a recent resident, having lived away for many years, but I, um, in light of our drought and our extreme weather conditions, I feel that it would be a very good thing for the, for the group to consider banning the fireworks for the holiday, July Fourth holiday. I was told the other day that it's late to do that. I understand it's late, but I believe I heard on the news yesterday that two additional counties in Wood County have now banned fireworks just yesterday for the holiday, if my information is correct, and I think it might be a good idea. I think we could celebrate after we've had a really good soaking rain with fireworks, but I think it would really be prudent to try to encourage people to not do that this holiday.
All right. We appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the court? All right, seeing no one else move forward, we will move to item number two. Consider approval of personnel action forms. Today we do have five. The first one is from Don Frittle. Our Elections Department is Laura Langford, is a move from a temporary to full-time. The second one is also from Elections. Again, Laura Langford, this is a salary increase. Also from Elections, the employee Venus S. Reed, this is an extent, extension of temporary employment. From the Wood County Sheriff's Office, employee Bobby J. Lefle, this is a resignation. And from Carol Taylor, our Tax Assessor Collector, we have the employee Dee Tackett, and this is a temporary hire. So we entertain a motion.
I move.
A motion by Commissioner Pay, seconded by Commissioner Shirley, that we approve today's personnel action forms. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number three is consider approval of payroll. We have payroll dated today in the total amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand, twenty-one dollars and twenty cents. I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
A motion by Commissioner Gaskell, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert, we approve today's payroll. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number four is consider approval of line item transfers and budgetment amendments. I do not find any in my packet, so we'll move on to item number five. Consider approval of claims. We have health, dental, and vision insurance claims today totaling seventy-eight thousand, five-hundred-seventy-four dollars, thirty-three cents. Accounts payable claims in the total amount of four-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars, eighty-one cents, and voided checks in the total amount of one-hundred-and-sixty dollars. I would entertain a motion.
I move.
A motion by Commissioner Gilbert, seconded by Commissioner Shirley, that we do approve today's claims. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number six is public hearing for the revision of Lake Shore Acre subdivision and take necessary action. It is now ten oh four, and we will call into session now this public hearing for the revision of Lake Shore area subdivision and take any necessary action. Is there anyone in the audience today who wishes to address that issue? If you would, please step to the microphone, identify yourselves.
My name is Harry Rayner.
And I'm Eleanor Rayner.
Information.
We'd like to present you with a letter that we are going to read, because we've never done this before also.
That's fine.
Honorable Judge Brian DeJennys, the Drake family are good and helpful neighbors. There is, this is not to harm them in any, in any way. However, dividing Lot seventeen into two parcels would present harm to us in two areas, monetarily and the loss of view, which we presently enjoy. As you see, we have given you some pictures. It would decrease the value of our property by removing lake views, which is the main reason why we purchased the land for our retirement. It is not the intent to prevent improvement of properties on the lake or make it restrictive to build. Therefore, we ask the Commissions to deny this division. In the event of this approval, we ask that you do so by building a setback of fifty feet north of line S. seventy-four degrees, forty-nine point five feet, and run straight parallel across the property to line County Road twenty-two ninety-eight. This will allow ample room for a large home with a wonderful view of the lake and not preventing us from maintaining both the value and enjoyment of our property. The alternative is a site easement, and easement is an incorporeal heredity of privilege with our profit, which the owner of one tenement has the right to enjoy in respect of the other tenement in or over the tenement and other person by reason wherefore the latter is obliged to suffer or refrain from doing. Has there been a drainage study on the half lot which is proposed to be divided? This parcel seems to slope in two directions. Should a permanent home or building be placed on that property, would it cause a problem with the now existing homes on Lot seventeen and Lot eighteen? This is in question because there has been flooding issues in our subdivision in our area. Again, we don't, we have no intent to prevent improvement of properties. We would, we only would like to see that all development take into consideration everyone's rights to enjoy and preserve the character and value of their property as well as their neighbor's property. Most sincerely, Harry and Eleanor Rayner.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Rayner. Uh, I'm gonna turn this part over. This is, I believe, in Commissioner Gaskell's area. Commissioner Gaskell, would you like to address the Rayners?
Well, yes. Actually, regarding the building and things of that nature, the only thing we're doing is, is having a subdivision to split a lot. Now, what's theirs is already there, regardless if we split the lot or not. I mean, uh, I don't know how we could deny someone the right to split their lot if they have a half-acre lot. Of course, if both of them becomes a half-acre or more. Of course, Russell Acker can explain to you, I'm sure, any of the concerns that you may have, but as far as the courts, uh, I don't, we've never denied splitting a lot if everything is right, because it doesn't have anything with, anything built on it. I mean, what's theirs, there. They split the lot whether they sell it to someone else or whatever else, and like, anything there that's blocking the view, if you have subdivision restrictions, you can go through JP Court, or it's a civil, civil matter with that, but Commissioners' Court can't stop that.
Well, well, Jerry, why, when the original subdivision was planted, why was that, you know, every developer will make the most money they can out of the property that they're developing, and that lot was never, never div, in a sub, into two lots? As an example, we have lots seventeen, uh, half of seventeen, uh, well, let's see, we have lots, um, eighteen, nineteen, and half of twenty. Those lots were each sold separately. So there had to be a reason why the developer never made that two lots, or else he could have made a lot of money.
Well, I don't, I don't know, when was it developed? I mean, that was many years ago. I couldn't answer the question on that. I just, I just know that splitting a lot, if they have all their paperwork right, as they do and everything, I don't know how we could deny them splitting their lot.
How about the drainage? Because our lot, right now, until we put a barrier up, our lot got the drainage, and so did the front of their lot.
But how does it change your drainage? Because the lots are still the same. I mean, it's still the same ground there. How does it change your drainage just by splitting a lot?
By building another, I'm sorry, by building another, another building, a permanent building on the upside.
Well, we're not approving that. We're approving just splitting the lot.
And then what happens when they do put a building on it?
That's a, if it, if it blocks your view and it has any, uh, has any revisions in your subdivision, you know, that's when you go to civil court, JP Court over. I mean, Russell, would you like to help out on any of these questions? I mean, because Russell's been out there quite a bit, too.
My name's Russell, I'm the subdivision coordinator, and I've talked to Mr. Rayner several times. The, uh, the Drakes had a study done by the register sanitarium to see if the lot was suitable for septic. It was, uh, depending on the size of home they built, it means a half-acre minimum. They couldn't put a house there with a septic system. Depending on the house, the driveway, it's possible they could overbuild a lot, but that's the owner's problem at that time. So they do have a proposed, uh, application area for their existing system to be moved off of that back part of the lot onto the front of their existing lot to where it would also work. They do not have to move this until they actually settle that half the lot. If they still own both halves in their name, then they can continue to use it as it is. Uh, I don't know of any subdivision regulations they have to, that's a civil matter between the property owners. If there are covenants that they cannot split a lot, however, Mr. Rayner owns half of twenty, which was sometimes split originally, so if there are covenants, that lot shouldn't have been split. So that needs to be researched by the property owners and determined, and they should have, also have some minimum building restrictions, that the house there can be a certain size. That may also be in their covenants.
Of course, we don't have setbacks as far as off of property line to property line. I mean...
That's in the building subdivision.
Right, it has to be in the revision. That's not something that Commissioners' Court controls.
They meet the minimum half-acre. There's, uh, nothing there now but a shed. I think they moved the...
It's a living quarter. That's not a shed.
Okay.
It's, it's a living quarter.
But it's still on their property, so until they sell it or whatever they do, you know, it can stay there.
Right. I mean...
Any, any drainage situation, it could be if the new owner's diverted water that caused road problems or flooded another lot, then that would be another matter.
Exactly. Yeah, that would still be a civil matter if they flooded their neighbors.
If they divert water across the road, then the county can step in, they divert water on you, then it's a civil matter, we're gone.
I understand your concerns. I'm just saying that on a, on a split in a lot, I mean, I don't see where we could deny them splitting their lot. They own that lot. And if it, if it meets all the requirements, which it does, I don't see how we could deny them splitting their lots, is what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Rayner. All right, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on the public hearing for the revision of Lake Shore Acre subdivision? Then at this time, I will, it is now ten fourteen, I will close the public hearing, and we will go back into the regular session of Woodba, Commissioners' Court. Mr. Gaskell, did you want to take necessary action on that revision question?
Yes. Uh, I'll make the motion, let's see, we need to make the motion to approve the splitting of this lot, I guess.
Would you like to make that motion? I'll move. All right. I have a second. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert, that we approve the revision of the Lake Shore Acre subdivision with respect to the division of Lot seventeen. Is that correct? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion does pass. Item number seven is consider approval of resolution to appoint Jerry Gaskell to the Northeast Texas Regional Water Planning Group. You have before you in your packet a resolution. I will read. It is a resolution by the Commissioners' Court of the County of Wood, Texas, authorizing the submission of a request to the Northeast Texas Regional Water Planning Group concerning the addition of Jerry Gaskell to the group. Whereas the Commissioners' Court of the Wood County, of the County of Wood, Texas, has the duty on behalf of the citizens and taxpayers of the County of Wood to add qualified voting members to the Northeast Texas Regional Water Planning Group, and whereas the Commissioners' Court believes that Jerry Gaskell will be a dedicated and conscientious member of this group, therefore be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of the County of Wood, Texas, that the nomination of Vice Chairman Don Hightower be followed as requested, and that Jerry Gaskell be recommended to serve as a voting member of the Northeast Texas Regional Water Planning Group for a term beginning September two thousand and eleven. And I believe there should be attached, if there's not, I do have a copy of the letter from the Vice Chairman of the Group, Don Hightower, making the recommendation of Mr. Gaskell. So I would entertain a motion.
I move.
A motion by Commissioner Shirley, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert, that we approve the resolution to appoint Jerry Gaskell, Commissioner Jerry Gaskell, to the Northeast Texas Regional Water Planning Group. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number eight is consider approval of appointment of Donald Sample, excuse me, to the Wood County Industrial Commission Board of Directors for the City of Quitman. We have in your packet a letter from Jerry Edwards, Mayor of the City of Quitman, and it reads, in accordance with Article Three, Section Three oh one of the Wood County Industrial Commission bylaws, and as Mayor of the City of Quitman, I hereby nominate Donald Sample as Quitman representative on the Wood County Industrial Commission Board of Directors. He will be replacing Sam Lang, who is no longer eligible due to his election as alderman, and it is signed by Jerry Edwards, Mayor. So I would entertain a motion.
I move.
A motion by Commissioner Pay, seconded by Commissioner Gaskell, that we approve the appointment of Donald Sample to the Wood County Industrial Commission Board of Directors for the City of Quitman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number nine, consider approval of onsite, onsite septic inspector contract renewal. Mr. Acker, would you like to address this?
Second job. This is contract for onsite septic inspector that we do on an annual basis as a independent contractor, where I furnish labor and vehicle expense, and the county furnishes office. Same contract terms as has been the last three years unless the auditor's office has a change for the county's part. That work good? Okay, there, she's okay with her part. So we just ask it to be renewed, and, uh, we just, we'd like to say that our building is still down in Wood County. We're probably twenty-five percent off on new building and permits we've issued, and our peak year was about five years ago, and the last two years, we've started dropping off, so we haven't really seen any change in two years.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Acker. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Acker? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to, second, renew his contract.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert, that we approve the onsite inspector, inspector contract renewal of Mr. Acker, and I believe it is for a term, a one-year term. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number ten is consider approval of treasurer reports. Ms., Ms. Burford.
Good morning. I'm here to submit for your approval, the county treasurer's report, uh, that will report the cash flow of the bank statements that the county treasurer maintains in the respective securities. I'm happy to report that we have fifteen million, nine-hundred thousand dollars plus in our accounts, with about twelve million of it being earmarked for the operating funds, with another two for the special funds. We are in the declining phase of the fiscal cycle, but however, when I compare it to last year, we're about five-hundred thousand more than we were last year. It could be timing. Uh, in today's economy, we are concentrating mostly on maintaining the principal and reducing expenses of, if we possibly can, on the cash transactions. At the end of May, we had about fifty-one percent of our funds in the depository, and our pledge securities exceeded our depository accounts at a hundred and twelve percent. And, um, if you all have any concerns, I'll be sure and address them with me. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'll submit it for your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Burford. Commissioners, have you any questions for Ms. Burford on her reports? And we do have the month as well as the year ending.
Correct, and then there's a page for the listing of the securities.
Okay. Commissioners, have you any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley, seconded by Commissioner Gaskell, that we do approve the treasurer's reports for the month and year ending of May thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Thank you, Ms. Burford. Item number eleven is consider approval of web hosting agreement with easy task dot com. I believe this is Mr. Parrish.
Commissioners, this is just a web hosting agreement. Uh, we are going to transfer our website from one carrier to another. This provider gives us a lot more features, gives us a lot more content management, helps us provide a website that's more informative and easier to navigate for the public. Also allows, um, the department heads or whoever they designate to update their own information as they want to and be responsible for their own content. So I just ask this, um, this agreement be approved. This is for a one-year term and has no budgetary impact, as we already pay for hosting through CERA anyway, so...
All right.
Changing from CERA to, what is it, Easy Task?
Easy Task, yes, sir.
Message.
House is the same?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioners, any, anyone else have any questions for Mr. Parrish? And you do say this will allow us the expanded capability of being able, the department and or elected officials being able to change their pertinent information on the...
Yes.
On the website itself. Okay. I like that. You can update your picture. All right. That's true. That's good. Uh, if we have no more further questions, I would entertain a motion then.
You'll move?
Second. A motion by Commissioner Pay, seconded by Commissioner Gaskell, that we approve the web hosting agreement with easy task dot com for our county website. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Thank you, Mr. Parrish.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is consider approval of order prohibiting outdoor burning. We have before us a, a order. I will read it, and then I will open it up for questions from the Commissioners. I'll try to read slow. Whereas the Commissioners' Court of Wood County, on this, the twenty-fourth day of June two thousand and eleven, has determined that Wood County is currently threatened by a high or extreme wildland fire hazard, a threat that is caused by abundant fuel and extreme dry and windy conditions across the state of Texas and here in Wood County. And whereas the Commissioners' Court of Wood County have determined that extraordinary measures must be taken to prevent the suffering of people and to protect and or rehabilitate property, now therefore, in accordance with the authority vested in the Wood County Judge by Section four point, four, four-one-eight point one-zero-eight of the Texas Government Code, I, Brian Jeans, do hereby proclaim the existence of such a disaster and direct that all necessary measures, both public and private, as authorized by the laws of the State of Texas, be implemented to meet that disaster. One, that a local state of disaster is hereby proclaimed for Wood pursuant to Section four-one-eight point one-zero-eight A of the Texas Government Code. Two, pursuant to Section four-one-eight point one-zero-eight B of the Government Code, this declaration of a local state of disaster shall continue for so long as this, as such conditions exist, with the exception granted to fireworks under Section four-one-eight point one-zero-eight I of the Government Code, unless ratified and extended by the Governor of the State of Texas. Three, pursuant to Section four-one-eight point one-zero-eight C of the Government Code, this declaration of a local state of disaster shall be given prompt in general publicity and shall be filed promptly with County Clerk of Wood County, Texas. Four, pursuant to Section four-one-eight point one-zero-eight D of the Government Code, this declaration of a local state of disaster activates the Wood County Emergency Management Plan. Five, the purpose of this order is the mitigation of the hazard posed by wildfires by, by curtailing the practice of outdoor burning, which purposes to be taken into account in any enforcement action based upon this order. Be it therefore ordered that the following emergency regulations are hereby established for all areas of Wood County, Texas, for the duration of the declaration. One, actions prohibited. A, all outdoor burning of any combustible material is prohibited. This includes campfires and outdoor cooking on campfires. A person violates this order if he burns any combustible material or orders such burning by others. This order does not prohibit cooking stoves fueled by white gasoline or outdoor cooking grills fueled by propane or natural gas. This order does not prohibit outdoor cooking events that are continuously monitored and overseen by fire department personnel and equipment capable of extinguishing any fire that may result from all such activities. B, the sale and use of all fireworks. This order excludes pyrotechnic displays under the active control and physical supervision of the local fire department with jurisdiction over the area of the pyrotechnic display and are continuously monitored and overseen by fire department personnel and equipment capable of extinguishing any fire that may result from all such activities. C, welding activities that are not in compliance with the following welding regulations. Welding is allowed by commercial or professional welders under the following guidelines only. A spotter is required for each welder, each cutter, each grinder, and for any activity that causes or potentially causes a spark. All grass, leaves, brush, and other easily combustible materials must be cleared within a minimum twenty-five-foot radius surrounding the area where the activity is to take place before any welding, cutting, or grinding begins. The welding perimeter must be three times the height of the actual welding. Example, if the welding is occurring ten feet off the ground, a perimeter of thirty feet will, must be protected. If a perimeter cannot be totally cleared of vegetation, proper precautionary measures must be taken, for example, protecting bush, et cetera, by utilizing fire-resistant tarpes. A minimum of one hundred gallons of water must be available on the site. A minimum of one water pressure fire extinguisher per spotter is required. Welding in an enclosed area or underground is acceptable. No welding is permitted if winds are ten miles per hour or greater, or relative humidity is less than thirty percent. Any welder or company conducting welding operations must, prior to welding, file with the Wood County Sheriff's Office proof, proof of effective liability insurance, or be bonded in an amount of at least three-hundred thousand dollars. Prior to any welding activity, a phone call shall be placed by the welder or the company conducting welding operations to the Wood County Sheriff's Office at nine zero-three seven-six-three two-two-zero-one, and to the local fire department with jurisdiction. The caller will relay the location of the project, cell phone for any contact person, name of the party responsible, and the name of the welder. Section two, enforcement. A, upon notification of suspected outdoor burning, the fire department assigned to the location of the fire shall respond to the scene and take immediate measures to contain and or extinguish the fire. B, as soon as possible, a duly commissioned peace officer shall be sent to the scene to investigate the nature of the fire. C, if in the opinion of the officer at the scene and or the fire chief or the Wood County Fire Marshal, the goal of this order can be attained by informing the responsible party about the prohibitions established by this order, the officer may, at his discretion, notify the party about the provisions of this order and request compliance with it. In such instances, an entry of the notification shall be made into the dispatcher's log containing the time, date, and place of the warning and the name of the person receiving the warning. D, at the discretion of the peace officer and or fire chief or the Wood County Fire Marshal, subsequent or flagrant violations of this order may be prosecuted in accordance with the statutes and procedures governing misdemeanors. Be it also ordered that this order may be enforced by any duly commissioned peace officer, and that the venue for prosecution of this order will be the Justice of the Peace Corps, Wood County, Texas. This declaration and order shall take effect immediately from and after its issuance and continuance until the conditions requiring this declaration and order are over, with the exception granted to fireworks under Section four-one-eight point one-zero-eight I of the Government Code, unless ratified and extended by the Governor of the State of Texas, declared and ordered this twenty-fourth day of June. To explain a little bit further, this bans outdoor burning immediately with respect to fireworks. It bans fireworks immediately to the tune of sixty hours, until which time I can file a request with the Governor and get it extended. He is extending all of these. Is there any questions, Commissioners? And this is, this is signed by the County Judge and all four Commissioners. Yes, sir.
Concerning the outdoor cookers.
Yes. Yes.
You explained it, but it's, it's gas grills and charcoal, right?
This does not prohibit, this prohibits campfires and cooking on campfires.
But you're, you're good to cook on grills, huh?
This does not prohibit cooking on outdoor grills. You want my personal opinion, I wouldn't, I wouldn't do any burning outside right now. But that's my personal opinion, yes, sir.
The question about the Exxon mobile operation, if the wind, wind is over ten miles an hour, they have to shut it down.
Yes. And they will have to work with their local fire department on those conditions.
We need to get in touch with them immediately.
They, all, all people will be notified immediately, and I'm asking the, uh, local media to cooperate with that. That will also be put out on the radio and television to this extent.
But we weren't, we haven't had any ten mile an hour days.
Not for a while, sadly, no, which is all the more reason we shouldn't be burning. Do I have any other questions, comments? I cannot take comments from the audience, I'm sorry. If not, I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Pace, seconded by Commissioner Shirley, that we approve the declaration of disaster and order prohibiting outdoor burning for Wood County, Texas, effective immediately. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number thirteen is consider Section Three Resolution as required by the Texas Community Development and Block Grant Program establishing intent to adopt and implement a subsection three policy. Ms., Mary Kay, excuse me.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, I'm Mary Kay Thomas with Amazing Grants. Over the years and all the contracts that Wood County has received through the Texas Department of Rural Affairs and then subsequently, construction contracts, there has always been an item in the contract that says, low and moderate income individuals should be given opportunities for employment. The Texas Department of Rural Affairs now requires that we have a resolution that also states, low and moderate income individuals and corporations, companies have an opportunity to bid or work on these projects. This resolution just establishes what the county has done so far through the contracts that we had already identified a section of the contract to state that. Now we have a resolution towards this end. You will also, in your packet, Commissioners, have a policy that is the next item on the agenda. By passing this resolution today, you have completed Items A and B of that policy. Item C of the policy will be a notification that is again placed in all bid packets by the engineer and by our office. The rest of the items D through H, maintaining records, will be the portion of it that we keep up with to make sure that any businesses that were identified as low and moderate income businesses had an opportunity to do business in Wood County. At this time, no businesses are identified in Wood County as low and moderate income businesses, but they can self-identify. This just gives them the opportunity to bid or work on any federal projects that are coming through the county, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, have you any questions of, uh, Ms. Thomas? If not, we'll address each one of these individually. Uh, I would entertain a motion on item number thirteen.
Make a motion.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Gaskell, seconded by Commissioner Gilbert, that we do approve the Section Three Resolution as required by the Texas Community Development Block Grant Program establishing intent to adopt and implement a Section Three policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number fourteen is consider designating the county auditor as the equal rights officer for Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. Uh, and I assume they have discussed this with our county auditor, and she's graciously, graciously agreed to do this. So I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion approved.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Shirley, seconded by Commissioner Pace, that we consider designating and so designate the county auditor as the equal rights officer for Texas Community Development Block Grant Program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number fifteen is consider Section Three policy establishing rules and regulations regarding the implementation of Section Three policy as just explained by Ms. Thomas. I would entertain a motion.
No move.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Pace, seconded by Commissioner Gaskell, that we approve the Section Three policy establishing rules and regulations regarding the implementation of the Section Three policy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Item number sixteen is consider approval of resolution requesting unclaimed capital credits from the Texas Comptroller, Comptroller of Public Accounts. You have before you in your packet a resolution. It reads, a resolution by the Commissioner's Court of the County of Wood, Texas, authorizing the submission of a request to the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts for a portion of unclaimed capital credits from electric cooperatives, cooperatives servicing citizens of Wood County. Whereas the Commissioner's Court of the County of Wood, Texas, has the duty on behalf of the citizens and taxpayers of the County of Wood to request any funds available and due to Wood County. And whereas the Commissioner's Court believes that the addition of these funds will assist Wood County in providing a manner to stimulate business and commercial activity in the county, including but not limited to economic development. Whereas an opportunity exists for the Commissioner's Court to request a portion of the unclaimed money received by the Comptroller from an electric, from an electric, electric cooperatives under Texas Property Code, Section seventy-four point six zero two. The code further states, the money is to be used only to carry out a program under Local Government Code, Section three eight one point zero zero four. And whereas, the Commissioner's Court is the primary governing body and ultimate decision-making authority regarding the legitimacy of requests for funds under the above provision, with the funds being payable directly to the Commissioner's Court, now therefore be it resolved by the Commissioner's Court of the County of Wood, Texas, that authorization is granted to the county judge to make a written request certifying that the purpose of the funds is in compliance with the provision of Section three eight one point zero zero four of the Texas Local Government Code for the funds due to Wood County, passed and approved this twenty-fourth day of June two thousand eleven. This is an ongoing request we do have to make every year to claim these funds, and we do, and I will dutifully make that request, if so, approved. So unless we have any questions, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gilbert, seconded by Commissioner Gaskell, that we approve the resolution requesting unclaimed capital credits from the Texas Comptroller of Public Accounts. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass. Item number seventeen is a proclamation and presentation to the Powell family. The Powell family would come forward, please. All right, and I will read this proclamation. This is an official proclamation of honor and respect to Sergeant Joshua David Powell. Whereas the Commissioner's Court of Wood County, Texas, acknowledges there is no true way of adequately describing the sense of pride and the need for paying homage to Sergeant Joshua David Powell, who made the ultimate sacrifice for all of our freedoms. And whereas Sergeant Joshua David Powell has brought honor to himself, his family, his community, Wood County, and the United States of America. And whereas we acknowledge that we can never repay the debt we owe to him, and we can never say enough thanks to those who put their lives on the line every day with their service. And whereas we acknowledge that no expression of gratitude is ever asked or required, and no level of expressed gratitude is ever sufficient, now be it therefore proclaimed that the Commissioner's Court of Wood County, Texas, hereby extends its highest honor to Sergeant Joshua David Powell, United States Army, and presents to his family the United States flag, which, which flew proudly at the Wood County Courthouse on the day he returned home. I'm crying. Fourth final time. And I apologize. These are all very special people. Thank you all. Sorry, I almost made it. I almost made it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
And now seeing no other items on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion adjourned.
Second, I have a motion by Commissioner Gilbert, seconded by Commissioner Gaskell, that we stand adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion does pass, if you are adjourned.